Could you please, could you read it?
In accordance with South Carolina Code Law nineteen seventy six, section thirty dash four dash eighty D, as amended, both the patients of the meeting and the meeting agenda were posted at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting on the county council building, at the publicly accessible place, on the county website, and a copy of the agenda was provided to the local news media and all persons or organizations requesting notification.
Thank you very much. I'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and dedication by Mr. Campbell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for this day and thank you for our time to come together to make decisions on the benefit of Jasper County. God in our hands as we go through these code enforcement issues, and also we pray for protection for those that are traveling in and out of this inclement weather. We ask all of these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Is there any discussion on a true vote agenda? I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to have a second.
Second.
Any comment? Hearing none. All raise their hand and say aye for yes.
Aye.
All against. Hearing none. Approved. Next thing is code enforcement. Mr. Campbell, over.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thanks for your time this morning. We plan to cover a follow-up with you on code enforcement and the code enforcement review that we did that was generated by your discussion earlier several months ago. You allowed us to recommend and hire Brittany Ward, who's outside council, to review all of our ordinances and go through that. She is going to walk through the memo and the work that she has done with the county and county staff. Long story short, code enforcement involves many different things, many different disciplines, and we are in our infancy in putting all that together. Typically, in the past, we've had one or two people associated with those tasks and have had relatively few code enforcement issues, mainly complaint grid. As we grow, we're getting more. You're seeing more. You're telling me your constituents are seeing more, and you're looking for a greater level of service, and so that's where we're headed. We think this provides a pretty good plan of how to get there. I did want to say in the audience, you probably know these people, but I'll point them out. We have some staff members. We have Ms. Lisa Wagner, who's the director of planning and building with us today. We do not have Chief Wells or Mr. Murphy. Have you took a look at the weather this morning? We've had a number of tragic accidents, and they are a bit overwhelmed this morning. We do have Mr. Ryan Campbell, who is our chief building official with us today, and also Ms. LaShire King, who is the business license coordinator. Miss Wagner? So all these staff members have been involved in a process, several meetings, working through the ordinances. It's no surprise that our ordinances were outdated. Fines and fees were outdated or not complying with statute, and so Ms. Ward is helping us do all of that, and I will allow her to give you the review that she has done, and you can ask questions, and we can try to formulate where we go with the next steps. Thank you.
Good morning, council. I know it is a very rough weather outside coming from left to right. It was a large storm coming from that way, so thank you for letting me come this morning. My plan is just to go over this as an overview. Please, this is a workshop, so stop, ask questions, make comments. That's what we're here to receive feedback from you guys. So the memo that I provided on Friday gave you a quick overview of the timeline of events. I just wanted to give you guys a brief update on that. So March eleventh, we entered into an agreement. March thirty-first, there was a summary of the code sections provided to the county attorney as well as the administrator. We had a brief conversation about that. April tenth, a meeting was held with administration to discuss the specific code sections and received direction from the administrator and the county attorney on kind of how to organize things in future meetings and how they wanted to move forward with the project. About a week later, we held a meeting with administration and the staff, specifically three individuals that are here today. We discussed the proposed penalties and the enforcement of any amendments to the code. Then, May seventh, we actually held a meeting here, myself, staff, and administration, and we went through line-by-line analysis of the code sections and all the amendments that were being proposed here today. So process summary that you see here in the memo. Essentially, we have gone through it. Myself and other members of our firm have gone through the entire code sections. We have identified the certain ones that can be built on, some that we needed to amend, others that we needed to discuss how the administration wanted to move forward in enforcing them. We also reviewed the state code. You will see there are, I think, two sections in the proposed amendments that we removed entirely, and that is because the state code actually preempts it, specifically off the top of my head, driving with a mobile device. The state code actually, and its title says that it preempts any local ordinances. So I know there's amendment to that state code pending in legislation right now. So myself and the county attorney spoke, and we found it best just to remove that section in its entirety. So moving forward, we can jump right into chapter one, unless there's any questions. So in speaking with administration and the county attorney, we discussed the ability for code enforcement to have another tool in its tool belt, which is the administrative citation. This is defined here as a formal written legal notice issued in response to a violation of Jasper County Code and as further defined and described in section one A, which is right below this. This is, like I said, a tool in the code enforcement's tool belt. This is a civil action. This is not a criminal, which is a misdemeanor. The administrative citation should be used, and we've talked about it at length with staff, as a way to reach out to the community. There is a fine associated with it, but it is to try and get something to come into compliance, whereas a criminal misdemeanor is a criminal penalty. So if you go down a little bit further on the screen, you'll see here that the administrative citation, the way that we have set this up, is that section one eight actually is going to establish what the administrative citation is, defines it. It provides that each code section underneath this, all the remaining chapters, will have to explicitly state whether or not the administrative citation actually applies to it. So section one eight establishes what it is, establishes the process of submitting it, providing it to the violator, as well as an appeals process. The remaining portion of the code will actually state that an administrative citation applies to this violation.
Can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
Which is probably through the whole thing. You always, let's say, warning violation, you say official or code enforcement officer. You use that interchangeably all the time, but that's part of our problem, I think, right now, is we use code enforcement to liberal. We have code enforcement for fire. We have a code enforcement for building. And then we have general code enforcement. We don't have that general code enforcement.
Would you like to say?
Well, Mr. Kemp, one of the things we discussed just later last week was defining better the official code enforcement definition and having a master list that the council would approve of who is a code enforcement officer for this, that, or the other, so putting that together as part of the ordinance. So we have a checklist that the fire marshal enforces fire stuff, and he is the code enforcement officer for that, or the official, because he has, fire marshal has an official title, which is a little bit different than a litter control officer who has an official title versus a code enforcement officer who may be enforcing the zoning and development standards or the building codes doing something else. So we recognize what you're talking about, and that would be one of the things we address is to create a list of details. Who is that person?
Well, that's already clearly defined by the South Carolina Building Code Council with all of those in there, fire code official, building code official, zoning code official, code enforcement official. So we legally have to adopt that or am or the other codes that we can elect to adopt. So those are already there, written to help us.
But what is not there is that it is this gentleman or that lady or whatever. So we then go the next step and say X is the official under the state code for this or multiple people, so it's clear that when they go, if they have to go to court, they are the authorized person to be enforcing and administering that code.
Right. You would have to pass a resolution or an ordinance identifying those individuals as having those additional functions with their position.
Well, that's why I'm trying to say when we do this, this is an ordinance, if I'm mistaken.
It will be.
Well, we're not defining it. We're just saying code enforcement. Then we don't recognize who is the code enforcement. So if you go, for your thing, if you go to court, there's nothing definite who does what. So if the fire department goes in and sees something that would be code enforcement, no, that's where it gets confused.
So it will be a resolution that we have discussed. The resolution would actually appoint the code enforcement officers so that they would be a recognized official that is approved and appointed by the gentleman here, and then they would have the authority to enforce those sections. You will see that throughout the code of ordinances in its entirety that the fire chief, the building code officers, they are explicitly still included because of, to point the state code that legislatively says those individuals have the right to do so. But the fire marshal is actually already an official that has that authority, but we have included them specifically. We've also spoken about having a code enforcement manager, which I think was proposed in the budget, to have somebody that oversees the code enforcement department in its entirety. So that's building up on where the county, as it grows, you will have somebody who is overseeing the whole process.
So you're saying that it's going to be a separate location, not like it's now under the fire?
Well, I think that's our growing to plan, Mr. Kemp, is we have very limited staff now, so somebody has to play the generalist in code enforcement. And currently, right now, that is a gentleman in emergency services. Where we probably need to go, these do have, start with one, probably several, just as Beaufort County does, generalist code enforcement officers. They're not experts in planning. They're not experts in any of these things in which these individuals can address the violations, but they're experts in corralling the complaints, logging the complaints, getting ready for court, and interfacing with these other people. So it's another level of staff to do that generalization administrations. Does that make sense, Mr. Kemp?
Yeah, I just want to be very clear that we, I myself, I don't know about anybody else on the council, but I think code enforcement is probably the most pressing thing we have of everything, because we are writing all these ordinances, we're changing ordinances, we're doing all that, and I think it was brought out in the planning commission one time by one of the commissioners, that we can do all this. We can spend the time, spend the money, and do all that, but if we don't have way enforcing the code, it doesn't matter.
And through conversations, specifically the last meeting that I had with staff, it was made clear to me that there was some confusion. We brought up a couple scenarios or, you know, examples, and everybody at the table kind of was looking around and said, but you did that part and you did this part, and so I agree with you. My takeaway from the staff conversation was that they supported the idea of having that resolution put in place so that it is defined about, you know, who's doing what. So back to your original statement or question, yes, it is generally stated as a code enforcement officer, and the reason for that is because the intention is to bring forward a resolution to appoint those individuals as code enforcement officers and identify the specific areas that they're going to run under.
Would it be better to say particular code enforcement officer?
State code allows for code enforcement officers generally, except with the exception of a litter control officer, which is why you'll see it distinguished in here as litter control. My suggestion would be to keep it in compliance with the statements that are made under the state code that allows for local government entities to appoint as many code enforcement officers as needed or necessary.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, Wells?
No, right now.
Thank you.
So under the administrative citations, again, I'd like to point out just some of the highlights. Section eight, subsection three, there is a warning violation. This allows for a code enforcement officer or other official to provide a written warning notice to a violator. Again, that is not mandated, is not required, but I feel like it's important to put that out there so that the code enforcement officer has that, again, has another option. We're trying to open up lines of communication. We're trying to get people to come into compliance. This is not a criminal penalty process. So the more communication we have, and staff and I and administration spoke a lot about that the other day, is that we want people to receive a warning. We want people to know what's going on so that they can come in. We can have an open dialogue and hopefully resolve the situation. You go down to administrative citations, the content. This is simply laying out what has to actually be in the citation that is provided to the individual. And then service. Service can be one of three ways. It can be in person, so you physically see the person. You hand the citation to them. Subsection two here states that if they are not available, that they can either put it somewhere conspicuous on site, meaning a door hanger, so that they know that person can't miss it, or they can deliver a copy to the last known address of the individual. Third, is electronic email or electronic mail. This can only be used if that individual has already, let's say, allowed, permitted, or notices to be sent to them electronically. I'll give an example of if they had a business license, and on that business license application, they acknowledge that they are going to receive notices, including administrative citations, in the form of electronic mail. Then we can serve them that way as well. But part of number three, the individual would have to acknowledge it prior to the citation being issued.
Why is that?
They'd have to, one, provide us the email, and I would suggest having acknowledgement that that individual, it's not just an arbitrary email address, that they are actually signing on behalf of and acknowledging receipt that this is their actual email address. I know people have multiple emails, at least I do, and so to have somebody provide you that email, to sign off on it and acknowledge that I'm going to receive things in this way, I think it'd be a disservice otherwise.
Thank you.
Now, how do you, I know there's electronic ways and means and methods to check those, but I know that this kind of, that specific statement, when using other codes that are adopted by state mandates, conflicts with those, because most of these, you have to in-person, certified letter, things of that nature. So we need to make sure that our statements and state statements align with those.
Correct, and I do agree with you that there are other citations and there's other, specifically to fire, and that there are other mandates for the code. Those sections would apply, and this is only simply for the administrative citation. So most of what you're speaking of would be for misdemeanor, and that would be a completely separate type of notice, but that electronic mail notice does not apply to the misdemeanor. This is only for the administrative citations. So all the other requirements for notice and communication that would be required by the state code or for the misdemeanor criminal act, those would still be applicable.
Just, which comes up, you have, the reason we have the sheriff, had the sheriff doing it and we had the police, had to be a police officer, I think, doing it. Does this say something different, that we don't need a police officer?
So you would not need an officer?
Because you can't take it, excuse me, because you can't ticket, but is a citation a ticket?
It is not a criminal ticket. It is a civil administrative ticket, so it's very similar to that of like a parking ticket.
You don't have to be a sworn law enforcement officer to give theirs.
Correct.
Thank you. Whoever.
So the next section down here is subsection C. This is the fees. So these are civil fees, and again, I'll make this in comparison to a parking ticket. These fees have been established. We have discussed whether or not there should be different amounts for different code sections. Administration and staff decided that they thought it was best to establish these set fees that would be applied across the board. So anywhere that administrative citations can be issued, these fees apply. There's a hundred dollars for the first infraction, two fifty for a second infraction within one year of the first, and five hundred dollars for a third infraction within one year of the second. Any questions or concerns or discussions?
Yes, I'm sorry. After twenty-four hours, you, after receiving the first administrative citation, then you can do another citation?
Yes.
Is that the second citation, so the next one would be two fifty?
Correct.
And the next one would be five hundred?
Correct.
What happens after that?
After that, you could place another one if you wanted to, or the next step would be the misdemeanor if the code section avails itself to the criminal misdemeanor charge. So again, this is kind of a stepping stone. We're trying to open the door. The intent is not to go back every day and write another one. It's to have the person come in, let's discuss it. Let's see if there's something the county can help in alleviating such a situation or remedying it. So, but you are correct. They could go back every twenty-four hours. You will see throughout the code, I have suggested that we amend the current language, which says daily. Hypothetically, you could hand out a citation or misdemeanor at eleven thirty at night and then hand one out at twelve oh one. I don't think that was the intent, which is what I discussed with the county attorney. So we have gone through the code and amended it to be twenty-four hours so that we don't have the writing of tickets every twelve hours.
Mr. Kemp, I might keep in the mind that for a serial offender, if it's a serious enough infraction, we still have the criminal side of this, which you can still, you can then accelerate escalate the penalty over into the criminal side of this if it's something that require, you know, a real public safety issue that we need to take care of. We can itself pick up.
The only reason I was asking is if you, the second citation, that's starting from scratch again. So it's a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars. What I'm saying is a hundred dollars for the next person. That's the second offense on the same thing.
We've also added in, and to kind of where your questioning is going, subsection two here, if you read that, it says time period to remedy a violation. We've also provided that code enforcement officers or the other officials, another tool, which is to provide a specific time period in which to remedy the situation, which I think, again, is telling that individual, you have fourteen days. You have twenty days to remedy this. Come in, talk to us. You're not going to get another citation unless you don't come in within that time period, and then we're going to come back out and check on things. We did put a thirty-day period, not to exceed, only to prohibit an individual from asking for sixty or ninety days. So in short, code enforcement officer can go out, they can review the situation, talk to the individual, and if the individual asks for fourteen days or twenty days to remedy, they can have that, and it'll be written specifically on the citation that they receive, so there's a record of it.
I have a question. Only warning, does that come with a fine as well?
The warning? No, it does not. So that's kind of step one.
And the twenty-four hours, is there, and then I hear the fifteen days. What's the difference between the two? I mean, if we're going to decide one of them, is that?
It's at discretion at this point, and again, this is where we need the feedback. At this point, it's at the discretion of the code enforcement officer. So if they are on site and see a violation, and we'll say building codes, individuals said- So, if they are on-site and see a violation, and we'll say building whose individual says, I understand, but I can't get the shut off my property until next week. At the discretion of the officer, they go out, they get it. They understand, they want to work with the person, so they put on that original citation or the warning that they have seven days to remediate on it.
I would say unless it was an emergency case, for me, twenty-four hours just sounds a little too hard for, because we've got to remember who we work for, and so fifteen days, something, you know, give them time to do something, because there's nothing they can do in twenty-four hours. Especially like to say, it could be one minute, and then twenty-four hours.
To that point, um...
Let me give you an example of something that you wouldn't want to give them fifteen days. They've got blocked fire exits.
Sure.
They put something up, and public occupancy is like, no, you got to get it fixed now. Is that good one, Mr. Round?
In the, in the code, though, and on the fire side, does allow for immediate correction of that.
And it's just as broad, so...
And that's what I'm saying, on the things that might be emergency, yes, but on the other stuff, you know...
Right.
Anybody subject to getting a warning and give them a little time to straighten it out?
I think that's what we try to do, say, we're trying to get people into compliance. Recognize the situation and take steps to fix it, and then we're going to identify the steps and agree with them, that's what needs to happen, and give them enough time to get it done before we escalate up to that issue level.
And I think a lot of the things that we get complaints on aren't the ones that need the super immediate action, but it's the ones that we follow the steps, like unsafe structures or abandoned RVs or cars or whatever. It takes time to get those, and there's a lot of logistics. They didn't come there overnight, you're not going to move them overnight, so give the people time, but it can't be spread out too long, but a respectable time to get these things to be brought into good compliance.
And I think that's where the discretionary aspect of this is. I know administrator and I talked, and I believe it's fully supported that this is supposed to be a tool to get people into compliance. Again, it's not that criminal feeling to it. It needs to bring people in and have those conversations, so that is the point of this. So, I think officers, providing that specific remedying period of time is beneficial to everybody.
Mr. Kemp, we also recognize that as we get through this, you talk about your current problems, that this is one, this is one tool to have all this together. You may see we have many employees who have this as an additional duty, right, and they're out and about, so we want them as trained as possible to be able to issue citations that they feel comfortable issuing, but we also need that administrative general overview of it, collection of data, reporting on all of the stuff and tracking it, so we're working on that as part of the program. But once you get this together, identify those individuals legally, adopt the ordinance, and we start to practice, we'll have to do a heavy public campaign about what you're doing and why you're doing it, which is probably going to be more effective than a lot of these little citations, so we'll work with you on that as well.
Well, I'm just, I don't, I don't know, and I'm not an expert, but sometimes when you say at the discretion, that scares me, because it means that you leave it up to somebody to make a decision that's not clear.
Okay.
So, if you don't, and I'm a great believer, if you do it for one, you got to do it for all, so...
Man, yes. At discretion is a powerful word, and the reason we need discretion is because no one law fits all.
Correct.
And all laws, and so sometimes somebody can be caught up in a law. And so discretion, for me, two-point, John's got a point, I like to make a point for me, but he also needs a little discretion, because sometimes the law fits, but not necessarily, if you know what I mean. All laws are like that, so I do like discretion.
Well, I wasn't, I would just make any comment really, is can, if you can tighten it up, you tighten it up, if you can't, you can't. I understand that. But to have that discretion, too many times, people say, well, you did it over here, then it becomes a, another mess. You're trying to do something good, and then another side, you, all of a sudden, the guy, it's just human nature, I think, but I'm just saying, if you can tighten it up, you tighten it up, if you can't...
I think it's a very good point, Kemp, but what I respond to that is, these are the administrative citations, right, and so you have the initial flexibility to work with somebody. The goal is compliance, and if you can do that by working with somebody without issuing a citation, that's what we want. If it takes a citation or two to get them to comply, that's the next level. If it requires throwing down the hammer and going after them with a misdemeanor or whatever it is after that to get compliance, that's the next level. But we want to be able to have that progressive opportunity to work with people to get these things done, because in my experience, a lot of it is they don't understand it, or number two, they can't afford to come into compliance, and so we need to think about how we help that as well.
I think that's a great point, leading into the next subsection here, which is an administrative protest. This is a, as I told our business license official, I said, I hope that somebody comes in and protests receipt of their administrative citation, because that means they are coming in to talk to you. That is another way that if a citizen is going to complain that they can't come into it for cost reasons, or they can't come into it within this certain amount of time that was placed on them, they can't remedy it, for whatever reason, they have now come and spoken to us. That's opening the door for that conversation to say, we understand, we have to acknowledge that there's a violation, whatever it may be. What do, what can we do? What are our options, or who can we put you in touch with in order to remedy it, so that the violation doesn't continue? Now, that is the hope of what a protest does. For the actual language here, it does require a written protest to be submitted within fifteen days of receipt of the original citation. There are reasons for the protest that are provided here. The person has to submit it in, which that either address, or if it is going to be through an specific email account, will be located on the citation itself. And then we have also included the hearing process, the protest hearing process. The hearing officer for that, I think this is a good point to be made, it is not an actual individual, and that is because different, so many different departments are going to be involved in this process, and there are going to be numerous individuals who have the code enforcement abilities. Therefore, we have made it so that the county administrator will actually designate a hearing officer that is completely removed from that situation. An example being, if the administrator simply put that the building official is going to be the hearing officer, he would not be an appropriate person to hear any citation for a building codes violation. It may be more appropriate to have somebody in the finance department, or some other official, or a deputy administrator to be that hearing officer, so that there isn't a concern of that hearing officer feeling pressured to make a decision one way or another. Any questions on that?
Would the person have to be, the officer have to be now, or can it be just a judge-type thing where you hear each side and then make a determination?
There is no specific language that is at the, I hate to use the word again, I hate to use the term again, but it would be at the county administrator's discretion to designate that hearing officer. It does not have any requirements to it, it would be at his discretion on who he feels is appropriate to have a hearing. Now, there would be quote-unquote evidence brought to the individual, they can ask for additional information, they can discuss the violation with either the protester or the code enforcement officer, and so that they come fully aware of the situation. Now, again, this is for administrative citation, so it is not a court hearing, it is not in front of a judge, so that makes it a little bit different.
Mr. Kemp, we don't have that figured out yet, but I'll tell you where I come from with that, is someone knowledgeable, not necessarily technically knowledgeable, someone that can hear the complaint and use some common sense as to whether we're being too heavy-handed or technical or not, to try to resolve the issue. I would rely heavily on Ms. Nicole Holt, who helps me with suggestions to you for individuals for the grievance committee, very similar type of thing. You want an employee that, you know, has good sense, that sees a lot of different things, and can see all sides and render a decision, so that's what we're going to be looking to do.
In the, in the law, how does that affect, let's say we file against him, does he have any other recourse? Does the person have another recourse?
On, on this, where are the administration's citation on this one? So, this is administrative process, it doesn't necessarily get you into the court process. Anyone can file suit against anybody anytime, so if they want to bring a suit and say we're violating their constitutional rights, they can certainly do that. We would hope that they wouldn't, because it wouldn't be that, hopefully not that serious of a thing. If it's that serious of a thing, we're going to go with the criminal side to begin with with the misdemeanor, because it's a health, safety, public welfare type of issue that would be there. So, we're hoping that this is a compliance measure to get people to talk to us, so we try and rectify the situation.
Without going, without going the legal route, because as we said, a lot of times they, we don't want to be spending money on that, and they may not have the means to spend money.
To be clear, this is what you call due process?
Yes.
You will see under final decision, subsection five, I keep going down, there you go. I'm going to read this, because I think it answers some of your questions, but it says, in addition to an administrative violation, citation, violations of the code remain subject to all other penalties and remedies permitted under the code or other applicable law. The administrative citation authorized by this section shall be in addition to any other remedies available or inequity for a violation of code, and it is not required, a required prerequisite for any other enforcement action authorized by the code. So, for instance, we've been speaking up about fire code regulations and enforcement of those. This is not a requirement. So, if somebody goes in, and we'll use Mr. Tutter's example, that every fire door is blocked, you can't get out, and there's one small door in front of the building, there is no prerequisite to say that this administrative citation has to be written when it's something where there's a serious life issue at hand. That can go a completely different direction. So, I do not want anybody to believe that this is a requirement by any level. It is a tool to use to communicate with individuals. It is not a requirement, nor does it supersede or preempt any other requirements, regulations, or possible penalties that they can receive. Any questions to that? You will see other, section B here, this is the general penalty. So, in reviewing the code, it became also very evident that throughout the code, there was several different variations of misdemeanors. There was some sections that said that it could be a misdemeanor with a fine not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars, others said up to eight hundred, there were stepping stones in some other sections. So, what we have done here is created the general penalty, which is the misdemeanor, and that is the magistrate's threshold, the five hundred dollars imprisonment, not for thirty days, we're both, that is what is in the state code, so we have included it here. Every other code section beneath this, so all the other chapters that cover the rest of the code sections, they are going to reference section one, or one eight A and one eight B. Those are the, I'll solidify it into one, so that they're easily referenced throughout the entire code ordinances, and there's no, I guess, confusion from anybody about what applies when. Any questions on that?
VI.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I, I think that's where, maybe we're, I may have lost...
Oh, VI, yes, a separate offense.
Separate offense. Any violation of this code or any of, any such ordinance, resolution, or rule, regulation, or order that continues for a period of twenty-four hours shall constitute, except or otherwise provided, a separate offense. Isn't that kind of against what you were saying before?
As far as...
Well, every twenty-four hours you can give a, so that, what, then when does that hap, when does that happen?
So, this, now we are into the misdemeanor section of this, and so the separate offense would be every twenty-four hours, the same as the administrative citation.
So, you'd have three misdemeanor, if you had three, you'd have three misdemeanors?
You could. Again, this is the criminal aspect of this, so the reason that the language says in here that except where otherwise provided is because there are code sections that state that you can't have it more frequently, if fire's the easy one, I keep bringing that up, but if they are not in compliance or refuse to be in compliance, or we realize that twelve hours later, they still don't have what they need for that health and safety of an individual, then there, there is potential that they receive them, but that is based on other code regulations, policies, federal guidelines, other things. You will see in the summons for enforcement, there is, I highlighted, it says ordinance number twenty-two-five dash, and it is highlighted in yellow. We would like to re-adopt the actual summons for the misdemeanors, because we'd like it to be clear and made attached to the new ordinances, so that everybody knows that that has been updated. So, that will be a separate ordinance to re-establish the summons. Again, that's for criminal acts. Any other questions? All right, then, we can go through each individual chapter, if that's your desire. I know this is a workshop, so I'm here to move forward with this however desired by you.
Mr. Bing, even?
Yeah, chapter three, animals. We're working with Beaufort County right now on redoing some of those. Hope to have it here in a couple of weeks. I believe it's with their returns right now that we'll get it, we'll take a look at it. I guess if there's change to that, so you guys would do for us?
Yes, and Mr. Tutter and I have worked, talked about this, the chapter three, knowing that that is being worked on.
Yeah.
We discussed it, we added in the administrative citation into this.
Right.
But I know Jasper County is also working on different aspects of the animal control department in its entirety, as far as the, you know, the new shelter facility and those kind of things. So, we've added the administrative citation in here as a tool to be used, kind of with the idea that this is all going, that that specific code section is going to be amended eventually.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
We can use this as an example real quick, if you don't mind. Under C three here, you'll see remedies. So, throughout our conversation this morning, we've discussed how the admin citation is to be used as a tool to get people to communicate with us, but it, that it is definitely not a criminal citation. So, in order to have people come in, discuss with our staff, and try to get them into compliance, there has to be another element to this that says, well, why are they going to do it? What, what's going to happen, other than the hundred dollars or the two fifty? We do have another remedy that is provided here, and is provided throughout the rest of the code sections. And we'll read this just so that we all know what it says. So, remedies, in addition to any of the fees or penalties provided for in this section, violation...
Excuse me, just where are you again?
C three, under a name...
Oh, we don't have, I don't have mine.
The very last section under the animals, chapter three. Says, in addition to any other fees or penalties provided for in this section, violation of any of the provisions of this chapter may result in the revocation...
Copy. Okay.
...the revocation of any county permit or license issued to a person or commercial business. Specifically, any business establishment found to be in violation of this chapter shall be subject to having a business license registration suspended or revoked in accordance with the business license ordinance filed in chapter eight of this code. So, that is yet another tool to get somebody to come in and discuss it with us. Are there any questions, concerns about this section? I think this section here also goes back to what the administrator was referencing before about communication throughout the different departments, to having somebody there to kind of oversee in, in general, to know that if one department's having conversations with somebody, that business license is informed of it, or building codes is made aware of it, so that we don't have five different departments going out doing the same work three times.
Does the business license have their own documents?
They do.
In here, they're on?
Yes, it is chapter eight. It follows the South County Code as far as the revocation, as far as having... It follows the self-kind code as far as the revocation, as far as having a ability to revoke licenses at any time. So yes, that is remaining the same.
And that will tell you from past experiences when dealing with a lot of things, especially with us having adopted business license in the county, the business license office is one of the most crucial pieces in the puzzle, especially when it comes to those with code enforcement issues in those commercial realms. There's a lot that can be done through them because the business license is essentially the golden ticket operating.
And I think she thoroughly enjoyed the meeting. I don't think it's even her behalf, but I feel like she was very supportive of this. I'll defer to her, but to have it in writing and to have the ability to actually communicate with individuals and be able to work with other departments, there's a little support there that I think this is providing her and her team.
You, when we did this, you did all the line throughs, was that you?
So this...
And on the other articles?
Anything underlined is going to be additional language, like new language. Anything stricken through is going to be a change from the previous code.
Mr. Kemp, our intent was to try and create a template and then put a couple of ordinance on this and say that the following chapters, chapters 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, or amended as well, is set forth and described through amendments so that we can actually follow up, read the code, ask us to do, which is provide the script through and whatever, and it will be a clean version of this. But it was, got to be so complicated here, there's about 14 different sections that we dealt with. We just broke them down, just by chapter by chapter.
And I do not want you to think that this is the entire code. My, this document started off at 78 pages, I think, and I've narrowed it down to 22 or so. So there was a lot of going through it, vetting out which sections need to be amended, which ones I believe could remain the same. There are some sections that could be amended in the future. I think they're still applicable, so Mr. Tutter and I have gone through it and conversed back and forth to make sure that we are achieving the goals that needed to be met today. So again, animal control, alcohol beverages, what we have done is basically gone through and said, applied the administrative citation to it, apply the additional penalty or otherwise the misdemeanor, and we've also, we've actually stuck right there. And you see here, added in an enforcement section to the different chapters stating who the enforcement individuals or officials are going to be for that specific chapter. And as I told staff the other day, we need to focus on the different references to chapter, section, subsections, and code. So this is explicit to chapter four, to alcohol beverages. Any questions?
Did you, did we have a noise ordinance in here?
We do. The noise ordinance is going to be, and I had a cheat sheet in my chapters and I left it, I apologize, but it is under nuisances, I believe. Noise is going to be, and I actually spoke about that specifically with administration at this point, I think it's chapter 10. It's going to remain strictly with the sheriff's office to enforce the noise ordinance, and that is because they are the line department that actually has the physical tools to get the decimal readers to enforce that. So code enforcement doesn't actually have the decimal readers to do that. So noise is remaining with the sheriff's office explicitly.
Just, you know, it's very confusing to me at least. Who does what? I mean, that's the proxy of everything here. Who does what? I mean, it's very clear, the building, you know, they're building a building, they're looking at everything going on there, right? They're making sure that it's code and all that. Then you have the fire, you go in there, if there's a fire, they have to have a certain fire extinguishers and all this, and when you have a place where you need fire suppression, that's all in there. Code enforcement, what, that involves litter, right? What else does it involve?
So code enforcement, and again, I think this is that big umbrella, so you're going to have individuals who's going to be overseeing code enforcement in its general aspect. Like I said, somebody who's communicating and taking in the information and making sure that the departments are communicating across the board. We've, as staff, we're talking about new programs that they could bring on to make sure that the communication is open between the departments. You will see here, so chapter 10, section 10 2A, we have discussed it, and this says enforcement. So unless otherwise provided, you're in, code enforcement officers, little clear control officers, and the county fire chief have the authority to enforce all the provisions of this chapter. So we try to inherit that as best we can without explicitly naming an individual.
So is it a fair assessment that the majority of code enforcement violations beyond fire and things fall under the realm of the sheriff's office? Typically, those that are coming from zoning, ordinance violations, nuisance violations, and building violations, would that be a fair assessment?
I think so, and also, Mr. Ral, as you've worked with some of this, I thought it might be helpful for Mr. Kemp to talk about the property maintenance code. The property maintenance code, probably different from municipalities, generally they adopt the whole thing. The county, I think we adopted several chapters of it, and so that's, that's another one that you may want to take a look at, Mr. Kemp, that will show you those types of code enforcement issues.
Well, I, I know one thing, we got to get it out of the fire department. It's just, just, yeah, just general code enforcement, you have to get out of the fire department.
I agree.
Because if you look at, if you actually look at the job description of our code enforcement, it's geared to fire. So we're, we have another fire marshal under a different name.
And I think that's what the administrator, our discomforts have been, is trying to find an individual who can oversee in a general capacity across all of the things you just named, and ensure that that communication is being open, to include fire, but not so that it is explicitly under the fire department to enforce.
Can I make a suggestion? With the majority of those violations falling under zoning and/or building, building reports to planning and zoning directly in the hierarchy of things. I think it would be more responsible, more getting more benefit for a bang for a buck to have all those particular facets report to the building official, and then they can be multi-trained and multifaceted things to where he can have additional votes for trades, inspections in the field as well as doing some of the building code enforcement, or code enforcement generally. More bang for your buck, multitasking, I think that would be the best thing that, in my opinion, where you're getting the best outcome.
And quite frankly, with our chief building official that we have now, doing a super job, that's a great idea. Mr. Ral, just so you know the evolution of this, this all started in planning and building. It was all about resources. Nobody had the time or the money or the people to do it. As you see, it's an additional job for everybody, but it's nobody's single job. And so as we grow, you're right, we got to find the right place to put it. I was suggesting, you know, you'll see that in the budget that you're going to get, providing some resources to hire this code enforcement coordinator, and I think just to start the ramping up process, that that person should report directly to me until we get it settled, when we get a system and a flow to it, and then we can divert it to any other department for, for the maintenance and operation. But in the beginning, we've got to have these joint meetings and coordination on all these code enforcement issues until we get that set up. That would be my recommendation.
Also, we've got to have a web. So it, when you go out with a sheriff, you go by, and they don't necessarily stop for the code enforcement, they see it. I mean, for example, we went to a place up in the north part of the county at one time, and they were building a building, and according to the ordinance, we're supposed to have a sign by the road, no sign, right? But he had no way, he had no idea, and neither did I, to be truthful, who he should call to say, hey, you should look at this.
Right. And that's what the coordinator will do, depending on the level of experience, the first thing is corral all of these complaints and catalog them and track them, because when one of these individuals goes out for their specific specialty and realizes there's another fire issue or a building issue that they're not in control of, they have to go back to their office and worry about their notes and who's following up on it and all that kind of thing. So you have a clearinghouse, you have one person that monitors all that, keeps up with it, reports on it, flows through, what's the next step? Was this one resolved, or this one wasn't? So that's your accounting, and you have some data on how well this is working or not working. We don't currently have that. So that is tremendously important to be able to do that. And along with that, Mr. Kemp, I think we've already done that, with some of the education staff, they're aware, more aware of other departments and what those issues might be in other departments, so that they are also, many code enforcement officers that you will empower, so that when they're out there, they can say, this is a building issue, but I also think this may be a business license issue. And so they can report it to the generalist who within engagement is keen. Does that make sense? Get somebody to keep track of it.
I want, I just, I think the thing I take out of it, I mean, ordinance is a little bit, we know that straightened out and all that. The biggest thing is, we're getting it out of the officer into a person we can hire, right? That, we, we've lost that first step. The first step is, first step for us now is, go out and give him a ticket, right? And we do that very poorly because we don't have enough people.
And also, your ordinance, ordinances were all over the place, and everything was a misdemeanor, and everybody goes to jail for every offense, which is not practical, right? But we, that's why we're backing up a little bit and being a little more progressive, to try to have a program that actually produces results and not just as a get tough program that doesn't work.
Oh, we have the first step, we, we have a staff. Instead of a giant staff, we have a small staff. Hopefully that will.
And that's what we were thinking about in our meeting last week with staff, is not only that, but when you come and get a business license, maybe there's an informational sheet that you give to them, to that individual, that says, hey, just so you know, we do have this administrative citation, but if you ever need anything, come in and talk to us. You know, you'll receive this morning. Administrator stated earlier, this is going to be an educational program if nothing else. Reach out to the community, have the papers written, something, let the community know that we're not trying to go out and just write the criminal citation and complete in jail for 30 days. We really want you to come in and talk to us. We really want that compliance, that this is an outreach program, just as it is a fines, fees, and, you know, get people in trouble.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, the outreach is coming to us. I mean, I don't know about anybody else, but there's a lot of calls to me saying, you know, they're building something and we don't know about it, you know? Or they're, they're putting a sand pit out there and we're surprised that it's there and that we lose, we're just losing land, we're zoning and all that, it's just like an avalanche. And we get it, but there's no remedy, really.
Right, I mean, and if you think about it, that's, that's actually advantageous because what you have is people out there self-policing and letting you know, which is half the battle, right? That these folks are so busy, they don't see it all. The next step, Mr. Kemp, is for us to be able to do something with that and for you to be able to show your constituency that we caught that, thank you, this is what we've done for that, and, and provide data for you and reports for you about how that's working and, and not just whatever happened to that.
But on the flip side of that, I also think we need to have the calls back, the customer service side of it, to where if someone reports something, to be able to call back up with them, or if someone receives something, they've got a working phone number that they can call, and people will actually return back correspondence, return a phone call back, because at the end of the day, I'm a big advocate for education before enforcement, but at some point, people need answers, and they don't want to act without, they need someone they can call and be responsive.
And not us.
No. I understand, we're trying to take, trying to take some of that off of you, but again, Mr. Ral, that's what this, as you grow into this, that's what we're doing. We're actually potentially creating a position that does nothing but that, not an additional duty for everybody else that's already overworked. This is a separate position that just does that, and we've not done that before.
Yeah, I have a question.
Well, since we're into this, I was going to wait till the end to ask this question, but I think what we're doing here is fantastic, but do we have the personnel in place to enforce it? One, we have to create new departments, and I think you alluded to it, is this in the new budget, to hire more people to do these specific jobs?
Yeah, Mr. Ben Geeson, you know me well enough to know, I hate, I hate growing a bureaucracy, right? I see this as a need, so we're not going out with new trucks and six people, right?
No, I, I agree with you.
I think, starting with one person that corrals all this, we're going to try to get through, get through it for a year, report back to you, how's it working, how's it not working, and go from there. But I want to use as few resources as possible and draw still on the talent of all these folks who know their areas, right? To help this generalist accomplish this.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I get calls weekly about this stuff. I mean, there's a house that's been condemned on Glover Road, it's become a drug house and people are staying in, and, you know, I've been dealing with that for over a month. Mr. Chief Wells helped me with the, some construction that was going on that had no permit, we got that shut down, I think, did it within eight hours, it was even closer than that, it was fantastic. So that was my thing, is if, if we don't have the personnel, we can have all these ordinances, but if we don't have the personnel to enforce them, then it's a moot point. And that, I see our biggest problem is we don't have people to, we don't have enough staff to enforce everything that's going on with the trailers that are dumping waste on the ground and people living here, people living there. It's, it's a lot going on right now, we got it. So I hear what you're saying about a year, I would just say, you know?
Well, thank you, because that's my world, right? I know that we need to ramp up in that, but no one wants to raise taxes, nobody wants to hire more people. And so this is our solution to that, and that was, get rid of all the crazy, separate misdemeanors, get it back here where we can actually work with people. And this is the cheapest and most efficient program, I think, that we could have created for you to consider.
So current staffing, to piggyback off of Chris, and you've got, you've got the building official and inspector in building.
Yes.
You've got a code enforcement officer and another code enforcement officer in code enforcement. You've got the fire marshal and inspector in fire. You've got your business licensed person here, so low over there, God bless you. Zoned in.
Chief, chief building official, did you mention him?
Yes, so, so mission, so that is a limited amount of personnel and making sure that is it structured right to get the best bang for the buck is what I was kind of looking to you earlier.
Yes, sir, we're just, we're trying to be very creative because I think, you know, we hear you, what you want, you want something more realistic and better service, but you also want to keep costs low. So that's why we put this together. And the only other thing is litter control officers, we have plenty of litter control officers. Some folks may have that as additional duty that don't now, but if you see something and you can write a litter ticket, we want as many people out there as well.
Now, is that a county or state violation for litter?
It's a state, so the state code actually has pulled out the litter control officer as a separate code section from code enforcement officers. It is currently sitting in legislature to be amended because the litter control officers are limited, and I will get the state wrong, but it is based on how many, what the population of the latest census was.
One per, you pointed that?
It's based on population.
Based on population.
But the census is old, they are admitting it to acknowledge the fact that more than maybe one per 10,000 or 20,000 is going to be necessary. So that is pending legislation right now, but that is a separate individual.
God bless DNR, it's a lot.
No, it's, it's always been a litter control officer, it's just the language.
I understand, but in this county, it's DNR that does a lot of this.
Do we make more sense at times for it to be based on square miles?
Yes.
Sure, I'd like to make a statement.
Yes.
So Andy and David, when, when we came in earlier this year, we kind of told you that we've taken a lot of phone calls and you heard it several times, and we said the same thing in the beginning. And David, you told me some of the problems associated with it, and a lot of times, that's as far as it would go. I would hear the problems and, and understand that's why we're not going to do anything. We all grabbed this by the horns, and while it takes a while to do this, you set all this stuff up real quick, and I like what I'm seeing. I think it has to be done, it has. I'm not heavy-handed and don't want to be, but at the same time, we got to do something, and y'all are doing it to my, what I see perfectly. And I know there's going to be other steps, I know we talked... going to be other steps, I know we talked four tiers, four...
Don't want to confuse anybody with the tiers.
It will, but I mean, are we moving into this number two?
I think it's headed that direction, I think in conversations with staff, I think that the obvious one is the support, the number of people that you have, there's little you can do with that based on your budget, so that's a, that's a problem in itself that will be addressed.
Well, that's easy, we can cut the budget somewhere and hire staff, is what I say, right?
I am not in administration. You might get some head nods out by the other staff members for that.
I beg you to receive the question, take a look at it before you make any further comments, because obviously, the employees, and the cost we spend for personnel and benefits and all that is a major cost, and so, that's always my style, and staff doesn't like that, but hiring new people is not forward needed.
Now, were we going to go over some costs associated, I think you said that at the meeting, as far as how, what is going to cost us to take code enforcement to the next level, is that something you're going over at this meeting?
So, where I was going with that is, that's an obvious issue with staff, I believe they have some numbers for, I did not have these numbers. The communication, I said it a couple of times, in between the different departments, going out to the same house three different departments, four different times, and not, nobody actually knowing that they are going out there for different reasons, so having a database put in place, which the administrator has referred to a couple of times, to have a program put in place whereby everybody is communicating without having to, is, I think, one of the biggest things that staff is desiring in order to move this forward, without having to immediately hire the additional staff for this year's budget, so I've kind of deferred staff as far as what they're looking for.
So, what method that you can do in the interim to streamline the fact of communication before, I'm sure you're going to be looking at software and programs, and obviously, that's going to have to go out to RFP, RFQ, depending on whatever it may be, you can get an IT to create a code enforcement at Jasper County, whatever, and it hits all the, everybody that has anything to do with code enforcement, so everybody's getting those emails, that's a quick, no-cost fix that you can do to have those things where everybody is.
That was a part of about a half hour worth of conversation last week, I liked creating a tracking mechanism, clearinghouse, so that everyone knows, if you go out for some reason, you posted somewhere that everybody else can see that you were out there, so that we have some depository of information.
I can make the suggestion of one email, that's used for everybody, so that we know, now, again, you have to get the ins and outs of what that person is, now hopefully you get a code enforcement manager who, that's their email, but some type of short-term network folder where people are at least all putting the information in there, but again, these are short-term solutions, but that's where staff was going with this, so they may or may not have them.
Mr. James Brown, appreciate the recommendation, we're still in the exploration on software and so forth, but it may be, and I can say this prematurely, but it may be that we already have what we need in place, we just need to get it working, and get people trained on it, in order to be able to do what we need to do, that's my hope, and so, I put a plug number in the budget for you to consider, not necessarily chopping out exactly what we're going to do, but I do know we need one additional person as that coordinator.
But that's, we do have a, oh, I think we have a big program, at least when I first came here.
Yes, sir.
We have a program, a lot of it we don't use, inventories, and other things that we could have modules, I guess, that's where it's important to start.
That's what I'm talking about, is getting that discussion, so everybody is already using a portion of the software, and they just need to do another portion, and perhaps we can do this without spending more money there as well.
Any more questions?
Derek, let's go.
Well, I am glad we did this, I really sometimes, it's, the problem was, I think we were just looking too high, we were looking not, we were looking for the hammer, we don't want the hammer, we want, we want to do it right, and that was the cause and the problem. We first, when I first got here in 2020, we had the sheriff, the sheriff was using that for something entirely different, right? But we had code enforcement, we had code enforcement, and he got paid for code enforcement. Then we put it into the fire department, and at the beginning, we were using people from the fire department, it was, it was kind of looked like a way to get into the fire department. So, I always believed that we should be separate, it should be in planning, building, it should be there, the staffing has to be changed, I'm assuming, but that's where it has to be, and get it out, so their, that's their task, is to do codes and all that, it's not the, the fire department has their task, make sure everybody's safe from fire, we have to have it separate entity, we have that, now, we don't need to have a policeman there, that could be the second step, we don't have, that's the whole crux of this, and I'm just so happy that that came out, so, because I think we can hire more, even if we hired two people, you know, it's a lot cheaper than putting a fire, you know, a sheriff in there, or a police officer in there, or we have other, and he doesn't have to, he just has to look, write a citation, and walk away, I mean, that's all, it's not confrontation.
Correct.
Right, that's all it is, we just wanted to say, you're doing it wrong, and we want to help you fix it. So, our next steps are to create the cover ordinance that goes with this, so we can bring it to you for consideration at one of our upcoming meetings, pretty often start the process of adopting the ordinance that creates this administrative citation, amends each of the 13 or 14 chapters to incorporate what we just went through, so that's our next step of Brittany to work through. Shouldn't we wait until the noise ordinance and the animal ordinance comes in, so we can do it all at once?
Yeah, that's going to be my question, what are you guys planning on trying to grab this up?
We've created three ordinances, one one could probably do. Well, I, my, not the preference, but I'll tell you that there are other ordinances we're going to have to bring in beyond this, in any event, we've got a business license update we have to do, because we're required by statute to do that, I think this is the year we're supposed to adopt some more technical codes from the labor, L O N R, technical codes, the noise ordinance is, we have one, we can enforce what we have now, while we try and work through that, so that you can, we can begin the process of, by July 1, having a, with budget, having a position available, that we can begin to start enforcing the other things that we need to enforce, giving us time to focus on, the animal orders may take longer, because we're in queue with two other players, you know, everybody who's working for county, whatever the private sector, not-for-profits work with, so, I would suggest we go ahead and do this, and get it in place, and begin phase two, which is the additional individual chapter modifications, as you're coming out of the place. No, it, could we create this staff and shared services with Ridgeland? Ridgeland's having the same problem, we are, and we're intermingled, believe it or not, I mean, the biggest problem they have is our problem, really, pick the building.
Yeah, I agree, and we've had some discussions with them, obviously, I would say, as Mr. Cheddar said, I think you need to get something in place immediately, that, and then give me the encouragement to go ahead and create the position, and create that staff coordinator position, I'd like to get our own act together first somewhat, before we start to reach out to others.
And I will tell you, as far as when it, shared services, when it's code enforcement and things of that nature, makes things a little bit difficult because of what the municipalities may have adopted versus what the counties have adopted, and if they don't 100% align, you may not have the same type of things there, but it can be one hand washes the other, they have a mechanism to where if they see something, they're able to notify, and vice versa, where they can, they're going back.
Right, in an extraterritorial fashion, we're riding through and do that, we'd love to have that relationship, we'd love to share the information, right, the data about what violations we're seeing, they may, they may be similar, or the same person in the municipality having a property, that kind of thing.
Well, to say, to that end, could you give us a synopsis of what needs to be done? Not that it has to, you know, you don't write the ordinance, just tell us, this what happened, the order that you require, so we have an idea of what we have to do. So, is, what comes first, does the business license come first, or does this come first, and then put it in order? Right, I think that, if I can use Brittany Services to help us get through this, because we have a lot going in there, and say, okay, these are the implementation steps to get code enforcement done, and the other things integrated, and identify those sections that we think are right, or could be further refinement, whether that be noise, business license, or building codes. Business license is an easy one, basically, they just require it every year, or every other year to adopt a new rate schedule, and we don't even have any, really, any say-so in it, we just have to go through the stages of it. L O N R, we're supposed to do it by a certain time, I'm pretty sure it's every other year, I think, that they come out with an update.
Every three years, there's going to be a little slow this year.
I think we're on that cycle now, as I recall, it, again, it's an organizational thing that we need to put together for you all, so you can see step A through C.
Mr. Kemp, you're suggesting a timeline.
I'm just suggesting, so we understand, right now, I'm trying to reduce what we did workload, because we're just burning out, at least I am, trying to keep up with this stuff, so, all I'm saying is, let's see where we are, and what we can do, and then we can plan ahead, and say, that's it, I mean, too much, we, we're not, we're blind as we go along, let's, show us the path, ahead of time, and it takes a lot, it's a lot easier to show us the path, than we understand why, why you're doing this stuff, rather than have to ask questions of why this happens and this.
So, you would have that timeline, and so you would know what would be coming to you in your subsequent meetings, and why?
Right, right.
Yes, sir.
Now, we're going to have to update fees and fines schedules to, with this, so, whenever we do that, would it be just best practice to see if anybody else throughout the county needs theirs updated at the same time?
We do that, and it's part of the budget process, you know, of course, we have three readings, so, those fines and fees are furiously changing in those second, third readings, but we have some of that missed route along with our annual budget adoption. The fees that we talked about here, the general consensus was to keep them fairly uniform, so that everybody can understand them, and not have to remember 10 different fees in your head, and in the end, once we get the timeline, you get through this, we need to give the council some information too, that you can speak from bullet comments and so forth, maybe a one pager about the program that you're doing, why you're doing it, how you expect it to be helpful, so that you can share that with your constituents as well.
Do we have any other, any other questions?
No questions here.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're appreciated time.
Very enlightening, very enlightening. General discussion, anybody have a general discussion? I put it in there just in case.
I guess, yeah, so, I think it was Friday, we wrapped up the MOU for treasure, I thought it was a very good meeting, 45 minutes or so, and everybody was in agreement, and some languages being moved around and changed a little bit, so, I'm really happy to say that that's going to be wrapped up here in the next 30, 60 days, and that's done, so, I'm very happy about that, and want to thank the administration for getting that done, and thank you, Mr. Fulmer, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, it's my pleasure.
Oh, the treasurer, yeah, it's for the treasurer and the administration, so.
Can you give us some kind of indication of, generally, is it just what they do and what we do?
Yes, yes.
Treasury does, excuse me, not that, Treasury.
Yeah, it just defines who's doing what in detail, and how things are to be, to be ran from now on, and that's, that's not only just for this treasurer, but the administration thought it was a good idea to have that MOU put out there for future treasurers, and so, that everybody knew how it was run, and it was just a, it was out there, it wasn't, you know, everybody flying by the seat of their pants, so I thought it was a good idea, like I said, it worked out very well, it was a good meeting, and again, I just want to thank everybody for working on it, it's taken a little while, a little longer than we thought, but I think everybody's very happy with what they have, and I think it's in compliance with what the treasurer wanted and the administration, so I think it's a good thing.
Mr. Ralph?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Very, very feminine every day.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Chair, Chair. I don't have to do anything else, I can just stay here and do nothing, you know, a little poke stroke.
I like to have a motion, is there any discussion on adjournment? Like to have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second? Any comment? All those in favor, raise their hand.
Aye.
Anybody against? All of those cast? That's it.
Sorry, thank you, everyone.